We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I didn't, I failed to print off my sheet tonight, Kristen, so you'll have to help coax me through this, please.
Okay. Um, so, hi, everybody. Friendly reminder, thanks, everybody for coming. My name is Kristen. This is the Polit Select Board meeting of January 26th, 2021. This meeting is recorded for the purpose of Peg TV. So friendly reminder there. In addition, Mike Beecher is our chair and is hosting our meeting this morning. So questions are directed towards Mike. And before speaking this evening, please be sure to identify yourself. So the, um, everything's clear coming through on the recording. You are all muted this evening. So this is a new feature. Everybody's muted upon entry to the meeting just to keep it quiet, I guess, while everybody's trying to talk. So before speaking this evening, a friendly reminder, you'll have to unmute yourself. So first thing on the agenda is addition or deletion of agenda items. We've got a couple additions this evening. There was a question that came up about auditorium rental for the town hall. So I thought that could be discussed under new business. Also, under older unfinished business, I have a request for the select board just to, as a group, approve the draft of the annual select board report. I believe that it will be covered under Deb's, Deb's memo, but there was something about the town meeting warning that she wanted everybody to take a look at. And there was, I believe Colin Palkovich is here to discuss one of the items on that. So I don't know when that would be discussed, but that's something. And I think in terms of deletions, we had on the agenda for the veteran banner project and the mailbox policy. I'm not sure if any board members were able to follow up on any of that, or if you'd like to keep that on the agenda, or if you'd like for that to be tabled for another week.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll keep it to the end, I think, for now, and see how the meeting goes.
I'll remind you of all of this as we go. I know that sort of a lot, but.
John?
Yes, this is John. I've got some items involving the elevator and the town hall roof and the traffic study that can be brought up in old business.
Okay, good.
So if ready, the next item is introduction of those present.
Yep, that would be great. If you would do that, please.
So this is Kristen again speaking. What I'm just going to do is go through the participants list here this evening. And if anybody wants to make any clarifications afterwards, or if I've forgotten anybody, you are welcome to let me know. So for this evening, select board members in attendance, we have Mike Beecher, John Malcolm, Chuck Whedon, and Bob Jones. Others in attendance, we have Kristen Powers, Rebecca Banyer, Eileen Belavilla, Beth. I don't know, is Beth Alden still here? Don't think so. She was here, but no longer. Frank Belavilla, Frank Nelson, Jessica Van Ort, Julie Mack, Ken Norman, Tom Collard, John Sabatka, Colin Palkovich, Maureen Brown, Deb Hawkins, and we have Gretchen's iPad. I don't know if you want to go by anything else this evening.
My name is Colin Staveel.
Hi, Colin. Thank you very much. Good. How are you? And then we also have somebody who I'm just letting in from the waiting room, Amanda O'Connor. And is there anybody else who wishes to be identified this evening?
Okay, sounds good.
Just adding one more thing. Okay, next up, we have approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, which is from January 12th, 2021. And before we get rolling on that, I did have one request to revisit some wording from item five of the last minutes, which was when Mr. Wesco was in attendance. And he wrote me an email just to clarify that the question about the conditional use permits that had or had not been issued was not pertaining to the overweight vehicle travel in question. So I've reworded that to, he inquired about the conditional use permit as well as overweight vehicle travel. So that's one clerical addition, and I now opening it up to if anybody else has anything.
I didn't see anything that I disagreed with. Everything looked good to me. How about everybody else? Okay, do we have a motion?
John will make that motion.
John made a motion. Do we have a second? Chuck, do I second that motion?
He's muted.
You could just nod and we'll take it as a yes, Chuck. Way to go, Kristen.
I know. Hold on, let me see here. Ask Chuck, I'm asking you to unmute. You, you have a little notification? Technology. Bob's here. Oh, there's Chuck.
Did he, did he shut it off? Oh, no, he is. He shut it off. We don't even have his picture anymore. There you are. Are you all perfect now, Chuck? Unmuted?
He's unmuted.
Do you want to second those minutes, Chuck?
Sure, I'll second it.
Excellent, Chuck. So we have minutes, uh, motion made and seconded to approve the minutes as written. All in favor. John?
John says yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, minutes approved. Thank you.
Okay, Kristen, again, next up is pre-requested appearances by local citizens and visitors. Mike Wesco had written to say that he would be attending this evening. I asked if he was requesting to be on the agenda, and I did not hear back from him. So, um, other than that, I have no pre-requested appearances.
Okay. So we'll move along then to?
To announcements, of which I personally have none.
Okay. I do not.
And if hearing no other announcements, next up, we have the reports. Our first report of the evening is design, or slot for the evening is designated for the zoning administrator, of which I have no official reports admitted this evening. Does anybody else have any word from the zoning administrator?
Nothing that I have. No?
Okay, that means that Jessica Van Ort from the Planning Commission is on deck.
All right, thank you. I sent around my written report, which I believe has been emailed out to everyone. I'm reporting on our meeting last night. The planning commission had Ed Boe from the National Planning Commission present at our meeting, and he answered some questions for us about the transition from the one acre town to the 10 acre town. He confirmed that, as far as he's concerned, the 2017 unified bylaws were properly warned. But it's the District Commission of the Natural Resource Board, the ones who can actually move us to 10 acre town status, who don't have the evidence of the bylaws. So the Planning Commission has decided we'd probably just like to go ahead and rewarn and rehave hearings again for the bylaws. There are a few additional things we're going to need to add anyhow, based on laws that were passed in the last two years. So we might as well just make a few updates while we're at it. So the next step for us is in our February meeting, we're going to finalize any language that we wish to add. And then we will go ahead with preparing a report that has to be mailed out along with the bylaws and the notice of the first hearing to some various stakeholders, including planning commissions in nearby towns. And I'm hoping to get the town clerk's help with the mailings of those. The other thing that we discussed was the enhanced energy plan, which we're working on making edits to before we move ahead with that. We had some, some things of note that came up during the discussion of the enhanced energy plan. One is that Polit is making big strides toward increasing our use of solar power. We had the data from 2018 and 2019, and we nearly quadrupled the amount of generation between those two years. And in 2020, a lot more solar went up. There's at least one large one that's gone up near West Polit, and that has not shown up in our generation reports yet. So we're sure that we actually have quite a lot more solar in 2020 than we had in 2019. So we're making good progress toward the state goals. And also helping local industry with putting up solar. Another thing that Ed Boe pointed out is that Polit is a leader in the new innovation of putting solar projects on old slate piles that have been flattened. There's only like one or two other towns that are doing that. And so it's very, it's very innovative of us, which I, I hadn't known that we were one of the few people doing that. We are also in moving ahead with the enhanced energy plan. We're going to look at the data from that community values mapping project that was done late in 2019 and are going to see if and how we can incorporate some of those thoughts of Polit residents at the time on what they valued into the enhanced energy plan. We also had a proposal which was brought to the Planning Commission by Tom Collard to have our town join the Otter Creek Communication Union District. And the Planning Commission did vote in approval of that proposal and that Tom should bring it tonight to the select board. So I'd like to turn it over to Tom right now to finish the Planning Commission's report by saying a bit about this, about this proposal. I don't know when will be the right time for the select board to consider it, but Tom's going to present it.
Thank you, fellow citizens, board members. I'd like to bring to your attention that there's an opportunity for the town of Polit to join a communication union district. I do believe the select board might be a little bit familiar with this from maybe a previous presentation early of 2020 from SO Vermont, which is a southern, which is Bennington County, which Rupert would have been a part of. This was presented at Rutland Regional Planning Commission, and I reached out to Amanda O'Connor, who emailed the information that I forwarded on the select board today. She's also on the phone or on this meeting with us, so we can have questions, we can ask her too. But it's a way to kind of step forward in our community. There's a lot of parts of our community that does not have Wi-Fi and with this fiber connection and coverage. It's an opportunity for the town to join a a union district that also our representative Sally sits on in Mount Pillar, so she's been supportive of it to help bring high-speed fiber internet to our community, to improve our Wi-Fi for our residents. There's definitely an advantage. As COVID hit and a lot of our residents had to be at home, it, it would give them an opportunity to be able to work from home, which also increases the value of our community and our real estate too. But most importantly, our, our children with the, if they have to go learning from home, there's homes in our community that does not have that service. So this would be, you know, step one to join with a communication union. And then we could then go from there. At any time, the select board could pull out and say they don't want to do it with no penalties or fees. And there is no cost to the town of Polit to join this commission or communication union. So with that said, I would if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than glad to try to answer them.
Go ahead, John.
Hi, this is John. Tom, what is the status of the Rupert CUD? Has, they solicited us, as you said, a while back, and I wondered what was happening. Was their successful in being established? I wonder what is the advantage with the Fairhaven Group as opposed to Rupert that's geographically a little bit closer? I don't know if that makes a difference.
I'll try to answer this, and then I would ask Amanda if I missed something. She can share it. From what I understand, John, Rupert has joined Bennington County, which is the SO Vermont, and it's more kind of driven by the counties. And it's pretty much anything south of Rupert has, is a part of that down to the Massachusetts line. I think it would be beneficial for us to include a dialogue with them. I, I feel with me sitting on the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, by going with the Rutland, I'm attending monthly meetings with them. I have a contact with them. We have a relationship with them doing our grants and everything. I think as long as we keep that line of communication, because we have a joint school together, would be very important. But I think going with Rutland Regional, I think, would be more beneficial for the folks that are involved in our town at that level to help it.
Thank you.
Um, if I can say something?
Please do.
Thank you. Yeah, so VT, Southern Vermont CUD is firmly established. We actually have a meeting with them to touch base Thursday. What's happening with all the CUDs that are cropping up throughout Vermont to meet the internet demand is working to collaborate with neighboring CUDs, and the purpose of that being to increase our, our market and bid power when it comes to talking with internet service providers. Polit's case, we're, would be honored and happy to have you as part of the Otter Creek CUD. But it's, our concern is more that you join a CUD. I think it's about 8% of the population is underserved, meaning they have 4.1, which is four download or one upload, internet service, or, or none. And it would be virtually impossible if you had a student at home, if you tried to work from home, or if you needed help from home, to do any of that with that service. So a CUD can plan for Polit's connectivity needs if Polit votes to join a CUD. As Tom said, it obligates Polit to nothing. You're not liable to any of the debt that is taken on by the CUD to make work happen, because that is inevitable. It's an infrastructure-focused entity. But it's just important that you vote to join one CUD or another. I will say, I could speak more to what's happening in the Rutland region for obvious reasons, but there's also work happening in the Bennington County. In the Rutland region, Consolidated Communications has announced that they'll be building up fiber in portions of Fairhaven and Polteney, for example. So getting Polit into Otter Creek CUD's planning means that we can try to work to connect the infrastructure that's going to be going up right along that western border. So we just want to make sure that you're connected and we can factor you in. Any specific questions, I'm happy to answer, but that's really our concern is that Polit's planned for by one CUD or another.
At some point, Amanda, will there be a cost to, to be a part of that?
No. It operates as a water or waste district. So if someone chooses to receive service from the CUD or its provider, whichever provider it contracts with, then you pay in like a telephone bill, you're paying for that, that service. But that's to the individual premise that would have the package that they would choose to pay for, but nothing is connected to the town at all, ever. And that's in legislature, legislation, sorry. And on positive note, the governor in his proposed budget today did announce that he would like to see 1.5 million allocated to help CUDs plan to, you know, do work sooner than later. 2.5 million to extend internet to Vermont homes. These are high level, and this is just a proposed budget, please understand that. And then 16 million for grants and loans to expand broadband in areas that need it. West Polit, for example, is one area I would say needs it, considering some people don't even have DSL. And we need to make sure that you're as competitive as you want to be in terms of internet access.
What's the timeline for like Polteney getting, getting the fiber and stuff like that? Did, did they give any indication of that, or?
Yeah, it is a little difficult trying to get specifics out of companies as big as CCI. But they have said that they will be building out this year, so 2021. And they do have the capacity, both manpower and the resources to do that. They have 140 million earmarked for fiber expansion in Vermont alone starting this year, and they have received federal funds to do work in Vermont starting in 2022. So they have their own funds to do, to start construction work this year. But again, the, the towns that they're announcing they'll be building out in, they have admitted it's only going to be a portion, it's like downtown centers, because that's the biggest bang for the buck, so to speak. And the CUD's goal is to make sure everyone's connected between there.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions? So what does the board feel? Do we want to get more information, or do we want to join the CUD now, or? Somebody, anybody have a comment or opinion? Chuck?
I would make the motion that we would join the Rutland County Association.
Okay.
This is Frank.
Yes, Frank.
I was wondering if this, the school wants to be involved in a collaboration with the town on this topic, given that they're looking to expand broadband for classroom use, et cetera. That's all. Thank you.
Right, but that's not really pertinent to this motion right now. Does anybody want to second that motion, or?
John will second that motion.
Okay, John. So we have a motion by Chuck and a second by John to, to join the, what'd you say it was, Tom, the Otter Creek?
Yeah, Otter Creek Communication Union District.
Okay. Is there any more discussion? Amanda?
That one caveat, I guess you could call is we need a representative, someone, maybe even two people, but at least one person who would like to represent Polit at meetings, or at least be a conduit for information.
Besides Tom, or?
If Tom would like to volunteer himself, I am happy to continue working with Tom.
Excellent. Good job, Tom. Thank you for that.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you for giving us a chance to bring this to our community.
Okay, all in favor? John?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, passed. Excellent. Thank you, guys, for excellent presentation and look forward to progress on that front for us. You certainly could use it over on my end of town for certain.
Thank you for letting us have the time.
Great. Okay, Kristen, what's next? Is there anything else, Jessica?
No, that concludes our report, and I want to thank the select board again for going in on this as I've been looking at the stats about how much of Polit is underserved, and it's, it's not good. So let's, let's get some more high-speed internet out to the folks along the, along the New York border.
Excellent. Thank you.
This is Frank. I have a quick question.
Okay.
The, the Planning Commission's had several Zoom accounts, and I was wondering if we're paying for a Zoom account for the Planning Commission? And since we don't meet on the same day as the select board, why we would have two accounts in that case? And why we wouldn't just have one master account for the town for a select board, Planning Commission, and the DRB? Just a question on the finances of that and because I know that, I think that Jessica used her own personal Zoom account to run the Planning Commission meeting last night.
Yeah, initially, I, I do have a comment to that. Initially, I had access to a town account which was under Harry's name, but about a month ago, that suddenly cut off. I think Harry changed the password. So I have set up my own account and paid for it to use. So, I mean, I need a personal account anyhow.
Kristen?
I think Julie is better suited.
Okay, Julie?
The Planning Commission had, I don't remember the reasoning behind getting their own account. I remember there was some reasoning, and I think it was something about recordings and how long we can save things. But the Planning Commission has paid for an annual subscription. So if you are not able to get into your account, that is something that needs to be remedied, because it is fully paid for, for a good several months more along.
All right, I'll, I'll contact Harry about that. Thank you.
And I believe you're right. I think it had to do with how, does a Zoom account, Kristen, maybe you know, does that record? I don't know. Harry, Harry had seemed like the good reasons why he felt that they should have their own.
So this is Kristen. I, if memory serves correctly, I do believe at the time, we were, Zoom was a lot newer to all of us, and we were, A, concerned about having multiple users, because we weren't sure what the limitations were with having, you know, multiple users potentially hosting meetings at the same time, because the town's account has been offered and utilized by other groups. And then additionally, yeah, the recordings was the big thing, because all of the meetings are recorded, and there's a limited amount of recording space on the cloud that the Zoom account comes with. So I think, you know, as Julie mentioned, the account's already been paid for for the year. So probably utilizing that paid account would be the best-case scenario. And then upon the completion of that account subscription, I think it would be wise to revisit what our needs are and see if we can pare down a little bit.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Anything else in regarding the Planning Commission? Okay, who's next?
So this is Kristen. Next up is the road foreman's report. I believe Keith might have just called in. Keith, if you did, you are currently muted, but you can press star six to unmute yourself.
He sent me a text just before the meeting saying that he thought he'd be calling in around, around 7:30, so.
So I did just see his number come through. It has since dissipated. But what I can do, if you'd like, is extend or read through the report that he submitted. And if he calls in again and is able to speak to any of it, we can do that, if you'd like.
That would be, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a report from the road foreman, Keith Mason. "The road crew has been busy dealing with winter maintenance. We have been on the roads nearly every day for the past two weeks. When not out because of a storm, we have been doing routine maintenance to get prepared for the next one. We've changed cutting edges, repaired tire chains, rebuilt the windshield wipers on one truck, and various hydraulic issues. We had some debris to clean up from wind storms. The permit is applied for, for the Herrick Brook Road project, and I am working on the Army Corps of Engineers permit that is also needed. The highway mileage certification is completed and returned. The annual TA 60 and the road and bridge standards need to be signed and returned, as well as the Vtrans grant paperwork. Thanks, Keith." And I believe Keith has just called in. So Keith, if you can hear this, I, this is Kristen. I've just read through your report, and you're welcome to add on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good, good. I was lost for a minute.
Okay, good, good. I was lost for a minute there. So you just read what I had sent to you today?
Yes, I just read through that email.
Yeah, I missed, I missed all that. I'm sorry.
That's okay. You had the perfect timing.
Okay, well, that pretty well sums it up what we've been up to. The only things on the forefront are, I've got to be working on that Army Corps of Engineer permit. I haven't established why we need one yet, but they're saying that we do. That's on the Herick Road Grant Project coming up this summer, so. And the other things to think about are the packet that we got from Vtrans. It's premature to fill it out and get it sent back yet because we have to have an approved budget after town meeting. Because those are the, that's where the information comes from that goes on the TA 60. It's from our, the budget that we vote in. And, but the thing we need to think about is applying for the paving grant and where we're going to apply for it. I, we got, you know, a couple of different options. You know, there's more to pave than we've got money to pave, I'm sure. But the Dambie Road, the Buttons Falls Road and this side of West Pollet Village on 153 would be the, would be the three spots where we could could look into. And what I would like to do is get some prices and we'll apply for the maximum amount on the grant. And then see what we get and then we can adjust what we decide to pave depending on what they offer us. And we know what we have to spend at that time, so. So I will work on that. If you guys will give me your blessing.
That seems like a good direction to start in. Anybody disagree or? John has a question.
Well, I have a comment. I was going to hold off to old business, but it involves the roads. So I thought I'd bring it up now, if that's okay. In response to our request for a traffic study, speed limit study in the center of Polit, the intersection of School Street and 133 and 30. We did get receipt of the letter, our letter that we requested. I signed it for the, on behalf of all the selectmen, just trying to get things done in a easy COVID manner. So anyway, that has been accepted and will be on the docket for their next meeting where they have it in spring. So we're making progress on that. And of course, this is part of the work we're doing to before the scoping study, so to speak. Looks at alternatives and pedestrian and travel intersection. So anyway, we're making progress and one step at a time.
Excellent. Thank you, John. Anybody else have any question? Chuck?
Thank you. Keith, bring us up to speed on the new truck. I thought it was in the paint shop. Must have got lost in the paint shop.
I haven't heard anything in a couple of weeks, Chuck. I mean, I expect to hear any day, but I have heard nothing and I did not reach out to them. It was headed for the paint shop and they had just minor things to finish when it came back from there. They don't put the body on and, you know, the, the dump body itself. They've done all the fabrication and all of that to it that goes to the paint shop. It comes back and it gets the final touches at that point. So I anticipate any time, but like I said, I haven't heard from them. And, and I will let you guys know just as soon as I do, but. So it's, it's got to be close.
Good. Anybody else have any questions or comments for Keith? John?
I got another question. Do we need to make a motion to accept this town mileage thing so Bob can sign it tomorrow?
It may not be a bad idea to just validate it with a motion, but it's, I believe it's all signed. It was, I think Deb sent it to Mike and he signed it and returned it and we have returned that back to them, so.
Okay.
Kristen?
This is Kristen. I, I did receive that in my email that that had already been signed and submitted, so. If you want a backup motion for that, there are two, I believe there are two other items though, Keith, that Bob needs to sign. There needs to be that letter of intent for the Class Two Road Grant, right? That we got from Patrick Wilson?
Yes, yes.
So, so this is Kristen, that, that we, you guys all sent, you all received it. I forwarded the email to you. But there was a letter from Patrick Wilson about Grant Two, Class Two Road Grants. And there needs to be some.
Yeah, that's, that's the paving grant that I spoke of earlier, Kristen.
Yeah, so that.
So we can, we can get it, that portion of it, we can get signed. But it can all go back in one packet as the, with the TA 60 right after town meeting. If hopefully if we achieve an approved budget. Because the grant that will be, we can send a letter of intent, I guess, that says we intend to apply for a paving grant. But we can't do the paving grant and all the rest of the paperwork until we have an approved budget.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, yeah.
There is, there is a letter of intent, I guess, in there that you're speaking of that we can send that we intend to apply for the paving grant.
Right. I think that that is required sooner than later. So Bob, I believe that has been printed out and will be left on the table of items for signing tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Julie had a question?
And my question maybe should wait until we're in old business. You can let me know. It was about the traffic study.
Okay.
So my question was just what are the physical boundaries of that study? Because we have long been working in Polit to work on the speed from between Sheldon's and like Mac Farm area. And anyone who drives through Dorset understands why it's an issue because it seems like we're the only town in Vermont that can go from 35 to 50 despite a dense population with no buffer zone, despite numerous accidents. So I just didn't know what the boundaries were of that traffic study or if there are any.
Julie, you?
The letter specifically says the general area of study on Route 30 is from the Barn Restaurant in the north to Sheldon's Market in the south with special attention on the intersection of Route 30, 133. It does not go as far as Mac Farm. But the scoping study could. So I, I don't think as being a member of that transportation connection, I think we can expand the scoping set to include that far. At least I'm hoping we can.
This is Frank.
Go ahead.
Maybe the select board wants to make a, a vote on a, a motion in a second to send a communication to the parties who are doing the study requesting specifically that the study be extended out to the Mac Farm or just past the Mac Farm on the north. Thank you.
Mike, can I follow up here?
Please, Keith.
Yeah, this is Keith. Yeah, it's, I agree with what John said completely. And there was a reason it was put there is because this is a downtown grant that we're applying for, for pedestrian bikes and, and, you know, the general flow of traffic through the village. So once we got beyond the barn and this came as a recommendation from Devin Neri from the Regional Planning Commission that to maintain our eligibility in this grant, we need to focus on that intersection part. That doesn't mean that we can't make plans or pressure them to go beyond there, but it would be outside of the scope of what we're doing right now. And as John said, when the scoping study starts, they may choose to extend it just because that is a safe speed limit to continue on till they get past the Mac Farm. But as part of the grant application, it will be within the parameters that John explained there. So there is a reason that it doesn't go farther.
Okay. So that sounds like something that as, as the study progresses, John, you can encourage to, to do a little bit more and keep us posted on that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, excellent. Anybody else have anything for Keith?
I have a question.
Colin?
Yeah, what part of Herick Brook Road are you folks working on this year?
The extreme southern end, Colin.
Down by Rolling Meadows?
Correct. We're starting at the Box Culvert and going to the Rupert Line.
Oh, okay. Where it's all muddy there in the spring. Okay.
That, that's the stretch. Yeah, we've got, we've got a Better Back Roads Grant. We've got to do some, grow some block walls along the riverbank there. And we've got some special restrictions because we can't reduce the bank full width of the brook that is right there on the edge of the road. So it'll, it's new culverts, new ditches, probably knocking the bank back on the, the southeastern side there. And, and then we will do the rock and rubble and down through the muddy part. And we'll do the whole stretch while we're there, even though our grant only consists of from Sugar Lane down to Fry's Old Place there, to where the brook goes back away from the road.
Okay. And you, and you plan on closing the road most of the summer?
I, I don't think it'll be most of the summer. We have to show substantial completion by June 1st. So, and I've got special permission at this time to start early from the River Engineer. So it's my hope that we're in, you know, the right position where we can jump right on that as quick as we've got manageable weather and, and knock it out. So it, and even at that, it's liable to be closed while we're working and then we may open it up overnight. You know, it may not be a continuous closure, but definitely will be just because there's such limited space there. While, while we are working, we will have the road closed, so.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Any more questions for Keith? Okay. What's next, Kristen?
This is Kristen. The next report is the assessor's report. There was no official report submitted this evening, however Karen had sent an email which I forwarded to you all this afternoon shortly after lunch, requesting that you review and sign the tax map contract with Cartographic Associates.
I saw that, but I don't know. Did that go, did that change?
That is a question that I'm unsure of the answer.
Right. Julie, do you know if that cartographics contract changed or didn't you even get a chance to see it?
This is Julie. I haven't seen it.
Okay. It, it appeared that it didn't, it didn't go into effect till like April 1st. So it seems like we could have a, one, once, one, two week session in between before we sign it. So if, if you could forward that on to Julie and see if, if that, I know that, I think, I believe there's two parts to that, isn't there Julie? The cartographic does for us two different.
For the mapping?
Yeah, isn't it? They, they bill us two different, for two different things, I thought.
Yeah, I think there's one that, that's quarterly and maybe one that's annually. I'm not sure. Off the top of my head.
It seemed like it had something also to do with what it, what it covered and stuff like that, but I, it happens every year and then by the time the next year comes on, I forget. But I think that we, we could probably, John, are you okay with letting that roll? One more revolution before we sign it?
We can find more information. In fact, oh, I couldn't open except for the front page that Kristen sent me. Or Kristen, I don't know. I don't think, I could only open the first page and I didn't get into the contract wording.
Okay. I will forward it. I'll try it again. I'll forward it along to you guys again. The, and I'll let Karen know. I had asked, trying to be preemptive, to see if she wouldn't mind printing it out and leaving it for tomorrow. So I'll let her know that it won't be signed. I see Chuck has a comment before I go too much further.
I would, I would suggest that if you could open that and take copies, send them to the five board members. So we all have a chance to look at them before our next, next meeting.
You'd like it mailed to you, Chuck?
Yes, please.
Okay.
It'll be fine for me.
Well, I think, I just think if you mailed it in print form, then we have that right in front of us. Because I can't get to my emails during the meeting.
Okay, no problem. We can arrange to have it mailed. It was, if this jogs anybody's memory, the agreed amount is for $1,800 for the map and the GIS maintenance services. And then there's an additional $15 per building added or changed. And there's no additional charge if a property record card was not provided. So that number sounds awfully familiar, but that being said, there could have been other, you know, contractual details that have changed. So I will touch base with Karen and see that these can get mailed to you guys and I will put it on the agenda for next meeting.
John?
I'm looking at the assessor's proposed budget and it's got $1,680 listed for cartographics. I don't know if CAI, GIS mapping is part of that or monitoring Kama is part of that or not. But anyway, 1680, but that may not include everything. But the rest of the pages, I'm sure explains that.
Okay. I'm just writing myself a note. So Bob Jones, please do not sign that tomorrow. You'll see it on your, on your table.
This is Bob. Thank you.
Okay. Until the next, I guess.
Yep. Next up is the town clerk's memo.
Um, yes, hi. The primary thing that I'd like to accomplish is to get the warning approved so that Bob can sign it tomorrow on behalf of the board. I sent everybody the rough draft. I hope you all had a chance to look at it. The first, the Article Two and Article Three, I need to insert those numbers. Julie is, I think Julie has those numbers for us. Okay, can you, can you give them to me?
For Article Two, it would be $463,293.0.
Four, six, three, two, nine, three.
Two, nine, zero.
Two, nine, zero. Four, six, three, two, nine, zero. Okay.
And for the highway budget, so that would be number three, I think.
Yes. Six, zero, five, three, five, eight.
Yes.
Okay, so Article Two is the Town General Fund budget at $463,290. Article Three is the Town Highway Expenses and Liabilities, $605,358. Article three is the, um, town highway expenses and liabilities, 605,358. So that information you would not have had on the rough draft that I sent you. Um, my question is article four, uh, the $25,000 to the town equipment fund. Are you keeping that on the warning?
Yes, I think we should. What does the rest of the board have any comment?
John agrees.
Yeah, Chuck?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yes, I agree, Mike.
Yeah, we want to keep that on.
Okay, thank you. Article five is the, uh, $17,000, uh, to the capital budget fund for the purpose of maintaining town owned buildings. Are you keeping that on the morning?
I would say yes. Everybody else agree?
Yes.
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 Hi.
Okay. Um, so the rest of the warning, uh, is as presented. We'll get to the article that Colin and I have been going Colin Palcovitz and I have been going back and forth with. Um, so this year, the, uh, legislation allowed for select boards to make the decision to not get signed petitions for anything on the ballot. Uh, the change, uh, this, the Polit Fire Department did ask for a change in their appropriation. Um, so that will go on this year, but in, uh, the next two years, if this gets approved, they would have to get a petition if things if we're not in the throes of COVID next year. Um, so other than that, the, uh, requests were all pretty much the same as was presented last year. None of the the services provided to the town asked for anything different, I don't think. At the end of the warning, uh, there are a couple of new articles. Um, article 30, the, uh, the church has asked to have the, uh, the parking lot paving to service the community back on the ballot. Uh, article 31 is also a new appropriation request from the Rutland County Court Diversion and Restorative Justice Center, uh, also the Rutland County Restorative Justice Center. Article 32 is a new one for a thousand dollars for the, uh, supportive Park Street Health Share, uh, DBA, the Rutland Free Clinic, which since this is a new one over $500, they would then be on the list to get assigned petitions next year. So that brings us to article 33, which is the, um, and I'm hoping that Colin Palcovitz can help a little bit. I have seen, since he and I have been have spoken about this, we were both sort of at odds of how to word the article. There have been other towns throughout the state that are making decisions on whether or not to include this article on the ballot for the 2021 town meeting. And from what I'm to understand, this is a, uh, vote to opt in at some point. There are some towns that are putting it on the ballot, some towns that are not. The wording that I gave you was, uh, what Colin had presented to me, which we can use that it, but I I wanted to also read to you the wording that another town, um, and Colin, you can see if this kind of fits in with what what you're sort of wanting to do also as far as presenting this article. Um, so the, this is the town of Waitsfield and their article reads this. Shall the select board warn an article to enable the voters to decide at a subsequent election whether to permit the operation of retail cannabis establishments in the town? And then as part of that article, there's a, in the parentheses, it says this is an advisory, non-binding question. Any vote to allow cannabis retail establishments in the town as authorized by Act 164 would follow and would be by majority vote of those present and voting by Australian ballot at a subsequent annual or special meeting warned for that purpose. So, um, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to, uh, have Colin chime in and, um, give you folks some more information about this article.
Okay, go ahead, Colin, please.
Great. Thank you very much, Deb, and thank you to the board. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. Um, my name is Colin. Um, this is my first time attending one of these meetings, so thank you. Um, I am a Polit resident. Um, I I think, Deb, I think outlining what this act is. Act 164, um, is the way that the state of Vermont is going about um, allowing towns to regulate the sale of cannabis. Um, Act 164 sets a framework for the tax and regulated sale. Um, and what it requires is an opt-in vote on a town's ballot to allow the legal and regulated sale of cannabis. Um, opting in does not mean that a s- a store would open up in town. Um, it simply keeps the options open for the future and it would allow um, a business to sell cannabis within town limits after going through an application and permitting process. Um, so a- as you mentioned, Deb, you know, it it just kind of keeps the options open for the future, um, and that would need to be determined um, by by future meetings. Um, and so the reason that I'm bringing this um, is because I I've spoken with a number of residents, um, on this issue and I believe that it represents the town's values. Um, I've talked to a number of growers and other, um, users and other residents, um, from different generations and different age brackets. Um, and there's been pretty broad support and I think there are really three main reasons that I, uh, think this is a good idea for the town of Polit. Number one, it represents a significant economic opportunity. Um, it would allow growers and business owners to profit from the sale of cannabis. Um, and there are a lot of, uh, there are a lot of growers currently in town. Um, and a lot of farmers and entrepreneurs that make up a significant portion of this town's population. Um, I don't grow and I'm, I'm not an entrepreneur, but I I think that there are a number of people here who would benefit from it. Um, I think number two, it would improve the current use. Um, it it's already going on. It's it's recreationally legal in the state. Um, but the sale of it is not, which means, um, you know, it has to kind of be either grown on your own or given as a gift or something like that. So there's no economic benefit and there's really no knowledgeable support either for medical or responsible recreational use. And so I think, given the amount that it's already used, providing knowledgeable support would make it something that's more, um, that happens more responsibly and more safely. Um, and and I think number three, it can improve the health and wellness of the community. Um, you know, that it it's a natural way to support health and treat a wide array of pain and illness. Um, and, you know, I think our our current medical, um, system i- i- it's mostly made up of of doctors. Um, and the education to become a doctor is incredibly rigorous, um, but it's not really focused on wellness. The training is typically around disease and the treatment of disease. And so most doctors are really only required to take one nutrition class and and maybe even no wellness classes. Um, I would say likewise pharmaceuticals are are they're typically used to treat an illness or a symptom, but they don't support holistic wellness. And so they can be terribly addictive and have really negative side effects. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the opioid epidemic in the country. More than 450,000 people have died, um, in the past 20 years from opioid use and, you know, cannabis is used medically to treat a lot of the same things, uh, but it's not addictive and does not, it does not have the same negative health consequences. So it's been used for a long time and it's now becoming more broadly accepted. The University of Vermont's medical department is offering a certificate on it. Um, and currently the only way to legally use it for medical purposes is to get a medical card, but that's a pretty significant and, um, roadblock for people because you have to apply for it. You put your name in a database and a lot of people don't want to do that. Um, and so legalizing the sale of it recreationally will allow folks to access it with that type of of knowledgeable support. So, um, so those are the primary reasons. I think in in some it would benefit the town with increased economic activity. It'll provide support for what's currently happening in the community already, um, and it it could improve health and wellness opportunities for town members.
Thank you, Colin. So, um, in the last couple of days, um, I have if I have seen this on the listserv thread, uh, and I I can't give you any statistics on how many towns are presenting this boat vote um, and how many towns are not. So I don't know if in your select board correspondence, you've been given any information about this, um, and and it's it's whether or not to put it on the ballot. So that's where we're at right now. I mean, this is, I don't know, Colin, how did you feel? Did you feel that the wording that I read from the article that Waitsfield is presenting was more in line with what the article should be?
Um, I I think I think truthfully, Deb, I think what you'd proposed previously was, um, was more concise and to the point. I think the the one that you read as an example here from the other town, um, was a bit complicated. Um, and I think it's it's a it's a pretty simple issue that, um, opting in would allow people to would allow a business to apply and if approved, sell it. Um, and so I I think I think keeping it pretty concise would would be beneficial.
Okay, um, my only, my only question is, um, that is it something that if we present this to the town now? It it it's still, it's still a non-binding question, am I right? Because the town would, the town would eventually have, it would have to go before the town eventually as a do you want to allow the town of Polit to? This is, this is an opt-in. So we're not, there's no commitment here. It's just that we're opting in for a future vote for the town. Correct?
My understanding of Act 164 is yes, that that you're opting in for future applications and future permitting processes, that nothing happens immediately. You, but if you don't opt in, it's off the table. No one can do it. So so yes, it's it's non-binding and that it allows you to opt in in the future, but it has to go through that process in the future.
Okay, um, so the question is for the board on article 33. This is a, um, this is a board decision, uh. Like I said, other than my communication back and forth with Colin and just the few, the last few days of the email thread that has been going on throughout the state. This, you know, I I can't offer anymore about this. That's kind of up to you guys and and where where you want to see this and how you want to see it.
Okay, Kristin, you have your hand up.
This is Kristin. I just had one question and one comment. My question regarding wording is, um, you know, it says proper permitting process and I wonder if perhaps it would be wise if we have this much information to indicate whether it's town and or state permitting processes. I'm not sure if it's a permitting process that one would have to go through with the state first and then approach the town. I don't know if maybe that would be worth clarification. So that's my question. And then my comment is just, um, in regards to opting in, it kind of seems like this is sort of an intent to participate in a grant almost, this this question. It's not committal. But the other interesting thing, I don't know what's been going on, but just as a friendly reminder to the board, there was that hemp processing facility that had been approved and for West Polit. Now, I personally, I've been by a couple of times. I haven't really seen much happening there, but I do just think that it could be an interesting way to generate some revenue for the town, not only of Polit but of West Polit, given that the board had supported that processing facility. That was all. Thank you.
Julie?
The only thing that I would add was, um, not this past summer, but the summer before, which I believe was the time period when, um, Anthony Traffic Content, I may be butchering the name, um, was going through his permitting process for the hemp processing facility. Um, a select board member, Ed Cleveland, had brought up at a meeting, uh, wondering just what what the board thought of if there were to be a future request to have a dispensary in the town limits. And I believe that the consensus of everybody at that time was that we're in the business of generating revenue through tax collection and that it seemed silly to shut off an avenue of that. That's all.
Kristin?
Yes, and I just did have one other item to add that. So the hemp industry in in our area has been quite successful and I do know from personal experience that hemp sales and hemp use has benefited a myriad of our just Polit residents. Um, again, in every ra- age range and bracket and socioeconomic status. I mean, I've been a part, I've been fortunate to be a part of noticing how that can help people. So I do think that it would be a neat opportunity for our town.
Um, okay, I can, can I, uh, ask Tom Collard a question? Tom, have you been here? Ha ha, has the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, I mean, in your, in your travels, have you heard anything about this?
Uh, Tom Collard here. No, we have not. Uh, mostly at the Rutland Regional, we've been talking about solar and, uh, farms. So nothing on hemp at this time.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Tom.
You're welcome.
So right now, the question to the board is, is do we want to leave this article on as written or do we want to choose not to add this article to our our warning for this year? So.
Um, Colin, is if it's not put on an article this year, does that leave the town off of being able to put it on in a future year?
Yes, my understanding is that, um, a vote's required this year and opt-in is required this year to be able to participate at all in the future. That is my understanding of Act 164.
Okay.
Okay, does anybody have any comment in positive or negative to toward having this on the article? On the morning, excuse me, having this article on the morning?
Would Deb read the copy that's going to be on the article again?
Okay.
So different from the Waitsfield.
Yeah, um, so with a couple of little comments that were made about the article that is printed on the warning at the moment, it is, shall the town of Polit opt in to allow taxed and regulated cannabis sales within town limits after going through the proper state and local permitting processes?
Thank you.
Does anybody have any, any comment plus or minus, or should we just leave it on the article on the warning? Chuck?
I would, uh, I don't know if we need to make a motion, but I would say that it needs to be left on.
Okay, is that necessary for a motion, Deb, do you think, or?
Um, well, I don't know. Is if I think you're making, I think you're making a motion. I think you're accepting the whole warning as presented. So
Okay.
We're deciding to leave it on with the little tweak in the wording. Um, yeah, you know, and I I can certainly, I, we can, I can put put aside the Waitsville wording. Um, and we'll just let the, let the taxpayers ask questions if they have questions when it's presented at the. the virtual Zoom meeting for March 1st.
Okay, so does any, does anybody have any questions about any other of the articles on the town warning? Does somebody want to make a motion to approve the town warning as Deb has presented it to us?
John will.
John will make that motion. Do I have a second? Somebody want a second to the warning?
I will.
Okay, Chuck, thank you. Have a motion made in second for the town morning. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
Okay, so you're welcome and thank you. And so what will, I will um, make the changes to this warning and add the the budget figures. And Bob, do you have an approximate time when you'll come into the office tomorrow to do your John Hancock-ing?
Uh, will nine work for you, Deb?
Uh, that might be a little too early for me. Um, can, can we make it for like maybe nine thirty, ten o'clock?
I'll see you then.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, thank you, everybody. Yep. Um, I only have a couple other things um, to go over. Uh, the, we, I think I had mentioned to you a while back that we had acquired a $5,000 grant to help with the expenses that we were incurring because of COVID. And um, I I think I talked with Julie today. And so far, we've spent about $2,900 of that grant. And are, I'm about to put in a, an extension to cover some additional expenses, COVID-related. One of them being uh, the postcard that I sent out to the voters to invite them and to instruct them on how to vote early absentee. The legislation was passed this year to give towns the opportunity to do a full 100% mailing like we did with the general election. We decided not to do that and give the voters the opportunity to request their ballots, uh, mostly because it would be a very expensive endeavor. Even though I think that there's some money that has, the CARES Act has provided some money for those expenses. But it's still an ex- a large waste of paper for, uh, you'd have to get like 120 to 130% of your voter checklist uh, for ballots and 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 such. So we went with the route of asking people to request their ballots. And that seems to be going well. We're getting an enormous amount of requests as people have gotten those postcards. Uh, Bob, there is also a highway fleet overweight permit for you to sign tomorrow as well. And I think, I think that covers it tomorrow, uh, at the candidates have until tomorrow to withdraw their consent. And a- after that, I will be sending the information to the ballot company for printing. So the ballot will be, the ballots will be in the works. The warning will be, the warnings will be posted and sent to the paper. We're working on the town report, so we'll be able to get that to the printer in a timely fashion. So it's very, very busy and we're moving at a rapid pace and still keeping up with the increasing and the title searching that's happening on a pretty regular basis. That's it for me. If anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any questions for Deb? Okay, well, thank you very much for joining us tonight, Deb.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Julie? I think you're up.
Hi, uh, not a lot, just um, the warnings or the um, warrants. Sorry, my little slip. Um, payroll for the bi-weekly period was $9,068.47. Counts payable was $27,364.79. Um, funds from the general fund, $15,736.87. Highway, $12,038.89. Uh, wastewater, $5,950.30. And additionally, there was um, $2,707.20 from the Town Hall Renovations Fund. And that amount is because our sconces from Autentic Designs and Rupert are finally done for the upstairs and should be delivered on Thursday. And so that was the final payment for those. And then aside from the warrants, the only thing that I needed to get from you guys was the Vermont Elevator Inspection Company had, when they sent their bill, which was on, I think, the last uh, last meetings warrant, they included a renewal contract, which is just designed to set the rates for, um, you can set the rates for either two or three years. I had forwarded in an email to all of you when I got this, um, several sheets of paper regarding this. But they, um, I believe that our elevator inspection was like in the $200 range. And so they would lock that rate in for us for either two or three years, but we would need to sign that contract. So we just need to choose to do it, not do it, or um, which two, two or three years. And then Bob could sign it when he comes in.
Okay, John has a comment on that.
Yeah, from what the research that I've been doing, and it's not completed yet, is that that's a fair price. I don't know why they need two or three years, but it seems to be the industry uh, um, way of doing business. But I'd recommend, I, it's a hundred, it's actually $175 and $25 is their certificate that goes to the state. The state uh, jobs out the inspection. They don't have inspectors of their own. It's kind of like milk inspectors that are hired by the co-ops or milk companies versus having their own fleet of inspectors. I'd recommend that we go for the two years and at that $200. I think things may change as we investigate more. I think it helps to have two companies looking at our elevator. One, uh, a uh, inspection like we're doing through this Colchester outfit. And then uh, having somebody else do the service and maintenance. So I'd go ahead with, go ahead with it. I think it's a fair price and for, I'd recommend two years.
Okay, and that seems like enough money. So with that, we should just do it on your, on your judgment. We don't, I don't, I don't believe we need a motion or anything like that. So, thank you, John.
That's something Bob could sign then tomorrow?
Sure.
Julie?
Yeah, I will have it ready for him.
Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so, go ahead.
So then the, the only other thing that I want to say is my standard issue. I put it at the end of all of my memos. It's just that due to the COVID uh, protocols, we're not accepting in-person uh, tax payments. I anticipate the next two weeks will be really busy because the final installment is on the 10th, which is two Wednesdays from now. So I anticipate next week and the following week to be really, really busy in my office. And I just want to remind the public, should they hear this or see the minutes, that I would, um, I'm not accepting in-person payments unless it absolutely needs to be cash. And if it absolutely needs to be cash, I really need people to call and make an appointment. So they're not just showing up and having, um, you know, a bottleneck of people at the doors.
Thank you. Somebody want to make a motion on the warrants? Chuck will.
Make a motion, uh, this is Chuck. I'll make the motion to accept uh, the warrants.
Okay, do I hear a second?
John will second.
John second the warrants. All in favor, John?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Thank you. Julie?
Sorry, I forgot one thing that I wanted to mention. Um, speaking of elevators, I did receive um, a bill again from Schindler's. Um, I think you will maybe remember that we had gotten those two back-to-back extremely large bills from Schindler for the repair, the one repair. And I had some back and forth with a representative of their company and he agreed to knock down the bills. Um, and I paid according to what he had sent me in an email. And then they sent a follow-up bill, like they just forgot that happened. So I just, um, I have printed out all of the correspondence between that gentleman and myself. And I was going to scan copies of the checks and the correspondence and write him a letter. Um, or write the company in general a letter. I just wanted to get an O- a general okay from you guys to proceed with that.
Sounds good by that, me. But anybody else have any problem with it?
No, I would, I would say when you write that letter, Julie, you know uh, how to handle the wording.
Excellent. Okay, anybody else have any questions for Julie? Okay, thank you, Julie.
Next up, and next up, we have the Emergency Management Director's Report as well as the Health Officer's Report. No reports were formally submitted this evening. I'll have to follow up with Bob Morelino. However, I do think it's important that everybody is um, appreciative of the fact and continuing to keep up with the ongoing updates that I believe Bob is providing to the town regarding the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. So I certainly appreciate it and think everybody might too. So keep your eyes on that.
Excellent.
Um, otherwise, we've got the um, wastewater treatment facility. I do not have a report, I believe, from this time around, so.
Me either, so.
Okay, um, so that concludes our reports section.
Down to old, unfinished?
Yes, um, so for older unfinished business, I know we had a couple of things. The first thing I'd like to do, if you guys don't mind, is just to um, have you discuss the Select Board Report. Um, just so that we can get a thumbs up, thumbs sideways, thumbs down on that, so we can get that into Deb. Um, thank you guys for providing your input. And I did send you out a draft today with the final kind of critiques. And I did hear back that it looked all right, but.
Chuck's got one, come on.
I would uh, the third choice is the final print. And I agree with it uh, wholeheartedly.
Thank you.
John?
I'm, I'm fine with that. I think it, everybody contributed to it and I think it looks good.
Excellent. Bob?
I'm fine with it, Mike.
Okay, thank you. Kristin, you did a great job. Thank you.
Oh, well, thank you. Deb, I'll send that to you tonight. Okay, thanks, guys. I'm just gonna pitter-patter that right down on my keyboard real quick. Um, uh-huh. Okay, um, in the meantime, so that we're not all awkwardly waiting for me, um, well, I guess the next thing is for me to talk about too, which is the radar-controlled speed signs. Um, I am pleased to report that I was able to connect with the Town Administrator for Manchester. Um, I think I have his title, maybe the Town Manager, um, John O'Keefe, as well as the Chief of Police for the Town of Manchester. And they both had nothing but great things to say about their radar-controlled speed signs. They did say that one of the greatest qualities was that you can do like the naughty or nice messaging or, you know, come up with some other fun messaging for people to not only pay attention to their speed, but also to make it a little bit more, you know, lighthearted. Um, they did say that in terms of maintenance, I know that was a question that Ed had. Um, maintenance, they said it was really quite easy that you can actually do pretty much all of the maintenance that you need through a computer. And you can do all your updates on there and log all of your um, statistics. So we would just want, you know, as a town, figure out how that's going to be administered. And you can also um, move them around, which is probably the most trying part of it all. But he said, that being said, it only takes about a half an hour to uh, relocate the signs. So that is my follow-up on that topic. I personally, just weighing in from a personal perspective, having done a little bit of research, I think that given that we don't have a huge um, law enforcement president, presence in town when it comes to speeding, this could be a really helpful way to put a little bit of, you know, onus on residents to keep their own speed in check. So that's all on that for me.
Did they get them from the same place that you got the quotes from, Kristen? Do you know?
They didn't say. I told them that we had worked with somebody from Elon City, so I can follow up. They were really nice and quick to respond, so I can ask them where they got theirs from. Um, but I do believe they were the same kinds.
Okay.
From what I gathered. So, but I can follow up. Not asking for decisions to be made tonight by any means, but I just wanted to be sure that I let you know that I was able to connect with somebody on that.
Excellent. Yeah, I think probably when the weather starts coming around, we should get them ordered so we could get them installed in the spring.
Yeah.
I think, did he say how long it took to get them?
He didn't. Uh, but we can review, I think that is something that I could probably follow back up with the gentleman I've been working with for the, the, the thing. Um, Jennifer, Jennifer Sullivan, who is in attendance this evening, does have a comment. I just received a message, so she's got a comment on this.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
I just want to reiterate that, you know, one or more signs come to West Pollet.
Yes, we've talked about. We're getting two, but did we leave it in the budget for two more for, for the following year, I believe, didn't we?
I do think so.
John, you're shaking your head like no?
I assume last year's $6,000 is gone by and we've got a new $6,000. I don't, would you leave, know that?
But didn't, didn't we put, we have $6,000 to spend before um, June 31st of this year. But didn't in the, to, was it to 21, 22 budget? Didn't we also leave that in for two more?
I, I don't think we.
We have $6,000, this is Julie. We have $6,000 that's in the current fiscal year budget that we need to spend by the end of June. And then we did leave $6,000 in for next year as well.
Perfect. Thank you. So Jennifer, that, to answer your question, ultimately, we're, we're planning over the next two years of getting four signs, which would be two for each, each village.
Great.
And they're also movable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
And then the other, this is Kristen, the other two items that had been in older unfinished business was the Veterans Banner Project as well as the mailbox policy.
So the Veterans Ba- Banner Project, I looked it over, but not that closely. But it appears that the only thing that would be is if someone was to choose to buy one of the banners, the town crew would, we would ask them to install the, the bracketry on the, on the appropriate pole, which would all be. which would all be determined from the VFW and the Banner Project people. And they would get permission, et cetera, is the way I read that story. So does anybody have any, any comment? Do we want to allow that? I mean, it would only, it sounds like they would put up appropriate brackets when necessary if people chose to buy a banner to honor a current or past military member. Anybody have any comment, or do we just want to just let that one ride, or? It sounds like we want to just let it ride, okay. Mailbox policy, we don't have a mailbox policy, Keith left, Keith just left too, didn't he? Uh huh. Yeah. Can we, can we maybe try and put that in so that we remember, or I remember to ask him about it?
Yep.
Under his report?
Yep.
Thank you. And what else we got for older unfinished business? John has something?
I got a call from Meg Campbell of the Preservation Trust of Vermont concerning the roof leak in the town hall. As we're all aware, that the Preservation Trust of Vermont has a lien on the, on the library, I think, too, as part of their grant that they received. And she was quite concerned that we hadn't fixed that leak yet. Somebody identified it as, building, and I'm sure it isn't helping it. Anyway, I discussed with her about the difficulty of having to go down on Foster's lawn, very steep area, and to gain access to use a lift of some sort to get up to the very high, it's gotta be almost 40 feet there to gain access. And I recounted to her that we thought we had Jeff Kelly and the potential for using Gib Max Lift in the fall. That didn't come to fruition. And we ended up not being able to do it as the weather got bad. She was quite concerned enough to say she was gonna write me up, whatever that means. So I don't really know what to do. I, I know I can't walk down that steep slope in these conditions. And I don't think anybody would want to be fooling around with a situation like that, just safety-wise. Maybe if you had a tree fall on it and you had a big hole or something, but. So I just want to reaffirm that we're working on it. And, and that I don't think the town needs to spend a huge exorbitant amount of emergency money to repair this leak. I don't think it's that bad, it isn't great, but it isn't leaking on an electric box or anything like that. So I just wanted to report that. I'll continue my discussions with her and see how it goes. I don't know what writing up means or what type of hot water we'll get into if we don't do it immediately. But she's welcome to walk down that steep bank with the snow and if she wants to ride a, a lift down there, go for it. But that's what the situation is. If you direct me to do something different, let me know.
Chuck?
John, in the past, where exactly is this? What side of the building is this leak on? It's apparently on the riverside?
It's on the riverside.
Well, in the past, we've always had very, I thought we had very good luck with Doran Roofing. But for some reason, we got away from him and started dealing with Jeff. But Jeff is short because he's, he has a full-time job. And then he only does the roofing. And it gets dark so early, hasn't been able to do that, I'm sure, but.
We used him, I was, I was advised to use him to repair the leak in the library this past summer. And he had been working full-time in Saratoga on roofs that had been damaged from a windstorm that came through. But he eventually got to us. And I think the clock just ran out this fall as far as decent weather. Meg Campbell also provided me with a bunch of roofing contractors that I could contact, not that I didn't know. But it probably wouldn't hurt if Doran can come and look at it and see whether they're something they want to take up on this type of weather or whether there's even a way to take care of it from the front side and work rope down to the back. I don't know. I'll look into it.
Yeah, we've got, I mean, I'm sure Doran, Julie can probably find his name and phone number.
Yeah, I've got his number, yep.
Okay.
I've taught him, because he, he did the standing seam roof on the side, on the west side porch of the town hall and did a good job.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I agree with you, John, it, it's, it needs to be repaired, but you can't put a lift down there. And a lift is by far the best way to gain access to that. So it's gonna have to wait till late spring when everything dries up and we don't make a mess out of everything down there. We had a problem, the lift, when they painted it, made a mess out of the lawn. We had to repair the lawn. So it's, it's unfortunate that, but it's not easily accessed place. And it needs, we need to, we need to work around that. It's not like we don't want to fix it, it's just the inappropriate, we just can't. You know, it just doesn't make sense to fix it this time. Chuck?
I would, I would let John call Doran and see if he can access the back over the front.
Sure. That is an option. Julie, did you have something?
I just sent in the number that I found for Doran Roofing. But I think, I mean, the issue is that we've already put money into that ceiling. And we've put money into restoring the historical features of the ceiling. And the ceiling under, you know, the, the roof above the historical feature is what's leaking. And so that's the issue, that if we just continue to let it leak, there's a chance that the, there will be damage to the thing that we've already sunk significant amount of money into.
Okay, understood, but.
I, I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying. I don't think that we need to like throw a million dollars at it. I just think that it's worth trying to get something done outside of just waiting for one contractor to get back to us, I think we can reach out to other people.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, what else we got for unfinished business? That's it? What about new business?
So Kristin here for new business, the board had received an inquiry about the possibility of renting the auditorium space in early February for a safety meeting for a local business for about 25 people. I had a quick communication with Mike about it and decided that it would be a good topic to bring up to the board this evening. As far as I know, Bone Builders is the only group that had been using that space. And I'm not sure where it stands now. I'm not sure how the board feels about having a large group of people inside together. I'm not sure what the current status on cleaning is. I just know that, you know, might be a good thing for you guys to discuss. I have not sent out any auditorium rental agreements as of yet.
Well, my opinion on, my opinion on that subject was that we don't really have a very good cleaning policy in place to decontaminate a room after it's been rented. So for, you know, a, a group of 25, it would, it would require some kind of decontamination. And we don't have a policy in place. So I'm, I'm tending to say that I would not be in favor of it due, due to the fact that we don't have any policy to clean the room when they're done. Anybody else have any comment on that?
Well, I would question how they're gonna have 25 people in that auditorium and be six feet apart in, in rows of, of whatever.
This is Kristin. The other thing that I just am considering following this previous conversation is that if the ceiling is experiencing some leaking issues up there, I'm not sure in terms of that. I mean, I know that if and when that does flare up, it is a bit wet in that space.
Okay. So do we want to allow them to use it, or would we rather that they didn't? Or what's the board feel?
I'd, I'd say take a pass on it for now.
That's my feeling, Chuck?
I, I don't know, I mean, I'm willing to go with it, but I just, they need to present to us what they're going to do to follow the state guidelines. And if, if not, maybe it's just easier to bow out of it.
My, my opinion would be to bow out because we don't, you know, it's, it's more complicated. And then it, then it adds a whole nother spin on our town hall and keeping everything that we're trying to do. So, Bob?
Yeah, it's up to you guys, I agree.
Okay. So you all right, Chuck, then, with saying that we just soon pass on it because we don't have protocol in, in place? That, that sounds like the majority of the, the opinion, Julie, if you could, uh, Kristin, excuse me, if you could put that out to them that because we don't have a, a protocol for, for such a gathering or anything like that, or any type of decontamination process in place, we would prefer not to.
Sure. And just, this is Kristin, one follow-up question, thinking ahead. If we should get any, if the board should receive any additional requests, you know, in the foreseeable future, do you want to continue to handle it this way where we can bring it situationally forward?
It, it would have to be, you know, and I'm, I'm, I'm thinking that until this, until we, we get through this, we really need to, I mean, for, for what it's worth, it's not, it's not beneficial to us to rent it out.
Okay.
Et cetera, so.
Sounds good, I can take care of that.
Chuck, do you have a question?
No.
I think later on in the summer, when windows can be opened and we don't have an intermingled heating system, forced hot air system, I think it could be a better opportunity for us than now when it's an intermingled with the rest of the building. We do have the, you know, extra fine filters from this fall's service. But it's, I think it'd be better in the summer when we could have windows.
Absolutely, thank you.
Didn't we, Chuck, again, sorry to break in, but didn't we purchase some air conditioning units that never got installed?
Yep.
Yes.
They're ready when we need them. Probably not this week, Chuck.
No, 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 no. But I just, I just remembered that, that we, we bought those and then never did anything with them.
Right, and it turned out that there was never, never, ever a vent that, that it worked out that we needed, that pushed us to install them. So what other new business do you have for us? We're good?
I don't think I have anything else.
Okay. Let's go with public comment. Does anybody have any public comment tonight? Jessica does.
Thank you. Actually, Maureen Brown and I have a public comment together. We just wanted to announce that the two of us are running a parallel campaign for the two open Select Board slots. Maureen's running for the three-year slot that's open, and I'm running for the one-year slot that's open. So we're not running against each other and that we're supporting each other in our campaign. So I know that people have till tomorrow to still drop out, but we're not dropping out. So we thought we'd make our public announcement tonight, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, I'm glad you're trying to get involved, super. Anybody else have any public comment? I'm not hearing anyone else, so.
So this is Chuck and Edgar's not in attendance. So I'll make a motion that we would adjourn at this time.
Excellent. Have a second on that motion. John?
John will second.
John will second that motion. Motion made second, all in favor, John?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight, have a good evening.